I will take a roll, call for the open workshop, January 19th at 6:30. Trustee Cruton is here.
President.
Trustee Desmond is here.
Here.
Trustee Turner is here.
Here.
Trustee Garilic is here.
President.
Trustee Lawanda is here.
Here.
Trustee Munoz is here. He has his card and package. Trustee Ryan is here.
Here.
Vice President Willbeck is here.
Here.
Vice President Robert is here. Trustees, before I start, there's two packages on your left side. One is the agenda for tonight's meeting, and if I have any time during this workshop, I'd like to start next week's meeting, so that'll be the plan for tonight. Before we do that, though, there's a short presentation. Dr. Desmond Degman's gonna run for us, and then I have one or two housekeeping items, and then we'll start the meeting with our agenda.
I think Dr. McGee wants to...
I'm sorry, Dr. McGee, you were gonna introduce the...
Yes. Last month, we had this video that we wanted to share with you, but we ran out of time because we were so busy, so we want to show it tonight with the workshop. This is a video that was taken and presented at New Jersey PSA where they awarded Tim Craig, the visionary director. So what they did was, they came to the special honorees' school districts, and they interviewed people that were involved in the application, and they interviewed people that he touched the lives up. So this was prepared by NJPSA, and I just really wanted to show it to you because it's really a very nice presentation, and you'll see how the students at Bayonne High School feel about their program and about Mr. Craig's involvement.
Kaiser of the Year is Timothy Craig. When Tim Craig was named Director of Fine and Performing Arts and Business Education for Bayonne High School, this former stage manager, director, and playwright hit the ground running with a plan to build a full-scale, comprehensive performing arts program. The first step was building his team.
I had a clear plan coming in. I knew the program because I'd been teaching here for a while, and I knew that the music program was a solid program. I had a marching band guy at one of the elementary schools that I knew would do a fantastic job here, and from there, he wanted a percussion program. And we started percussion program. And as we talked more, we started to develop and really laid the groundwork for what we wanted the elementary schools to be doing.
And with band, music, and drama in place, Tim needed to add one very important program to complete the vision.
Always at Bayonne High School, I would encounter students, and they would leave my rehearsals and say, "I've gotta go to dance," and they would go off to a dance studio, and I said, "You know, I really need a dance program here." Five years later, I'm happy to say that Bayonne has established itself as a really, really fantastic dance program. We're known throughout the state, and that's because of our work with Kelly McGovern and some really, really dedicated and talented students.
And with all of these arts programs flourishing under Tim's direction, the idea to create the Academy for Fine Performing Arts and Academics was born.
So listen, we've got honors classrooms, we've got art classrooms all over the building. What if we consolidated them? What if we put them all together? And from there, grew this idea of, well, what if we really created a small group of students, a cohort of students who were interested in careers in the fine and performing arts, and certainly our academic program, our honors program? We consolidated them there. A large part of their curriculum is, I mean, a very, very large part of it, is performing, and we do concerts, and we give them opportunities throughout the year to perform.
As a result of Tim's vision and the tireless efforts of his staff, these close-knit students in the academy are learning, performing, and growing together, and gaining confidence in themselves.
I mean, Mr. Craig has always pushed me to be the best that I could possibly be.
Absolutely. I think anyone who has the guts to go and stand on the stage in front of people and just present themselves, it's incredible.
They have the guts to do anything. Like, they taught us how to be confident here, and they taught, it was always like a warm welcome.
That's probably one of the greatest things I've ever heard. Every bad day you may ever have as an educator, that can make it worth it, because you know what you're doing is working, and it's effective, and it's changing lives, and it's making, forging these relationships among these students, and it's what we're here for.
And as these students prepare for graduation and the end of their experiences at Bayonne High School, they become understandably emotional as they reflect on what the academy has meant to them.
Like, this whole program, like, brought us together as friends.
Yeah, this is why we're friends. Like, if it wasn't for this program, we would've never been friends.
Through all of it, and again, I don't think I've ever said it to them, I'm always telling them I'm proud of them, but they can't have a disappointment. They just can't. I mean, they're like, they're like my kids. They are. I love them all. I do. And they've always made me proud.
Mr. Craig, you changed my life forever.
Mr. Craig, thank you for always encouraging me to be myself and to help me find my voice when I didn't feel like I always could.
Don, thank you for pushing me to be the best I can be always.
It means a lot. You've been like a second brother to me, and I hope our bond extends past these high school walls. Thank you.
Mr. Craig, thank you for helping me find confidence in singing and acting and performing in front of others.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh, thank you so much. I love you. I love you, thank you.
Mr. Craig, thank you so much for all of the opportunities and this life you've given me in the Arts Academy. I'm gonna cry.
You did some good things. You made some differences in some children's lives, and that's important.
Congratulations, Mr. Craig.
(singing) In old times, we pledged our faith anew.
Now, there were other presentations for the other honorees, but I have to tell you, this was the only one that was emotional. And of course, I knew what this was coming, but so I was at the event, and so I was watching other people, and it was really amazing to see how they felt about this video. In fact, people came over to us at our table, because I know so many of the people that were there, and saying, "Gee, Patsy, that was really very, very special. That must be a great program, you know, for your kids." And I said, "It is." So I said, "We had a great leader, and you know, continues to be a great program." So I wanted to share that with you, because we told you about the award, but we never had the opportunity to share with you, you know, what was shown that day. So that's what I have right now. I don't know if you want to continue the meeting, right, Dr. Maida? Okay.
Like I said, just some housekeeping. I received a message from Mayor DeSantis of the City Hall that the interlocal agreement between the city and the school district was on last night's agenda and path. Just so you know.
City Council, City Council.
As you sat down, on your right-hand side, obviously...
I'm sorry, for you to reach, which...
That was the insurance program.
Okay. Want to make sure. Thank you.
So they had it at their agenda meeting, and then we passed it, and then they needed to pass it back. So on your right-hand side, there's an upcoming Hudson County School Board meeting. Please let us know if you'd like to attend. Also, the resolution that...
If I could just make a comment on this. This individual at a speaking that night, Lieutenant Colonel Edward Crut, he was the speaker at the New Jersey School Board's convention in Atlantic City. I attended his session. He's an excellent speaker. He has a lot to illustrate about what the military can do for the schools in New Jersey. The sad thing about it is, and this is coming from him, that many of the school districts in New Jersey do not allow the military to come into the schools, which is, I find, deplorable. But anyway, this is, Dr. McGee, and this is the individual that we had discussed before. And if anybody has the opportunity to see him speak, you'll know what I'm talking about. He's excellent, and he provides other avenues for high school students that maybe college is not for them, that they can go in and take advantage of many of the programs of the military. That's all around.
Does that agree with the board meeting?
Yes. There's another sad thing. We have a board meeting that night.
Board meeting is the 16th of February.
Unfortunately.
Disregard that notice.
But I would like to suggest that if maybe we could have him come to one of our meetings and speak, or speak to the high school students, if possible. He's well worth it.
So we could do that. We do have quite a group that comes here to support our students, and you know, at graduation, I think we had, how many students do you have here who are going to the United States? What, do you have a question?
Yeah, in fact, I remember when I was vice principal in House Five, we had the military different branches up all during the year in the senior caf...
Right.
Just to present to them. So they do make Bayonne High School one of their first stops.
Yeah, and that's continued. So we do have that representation, and we really feel that it's valuable for our students to have direction and have someplace to go, you know, as far as a career and possibly even trades, because they do learn that, too, you know, if they're in the service. So, but we certainly can add to that, Trustee Garilic.
Thank you. Next up in the package on your right-hand side, last week at our reorg meeting, we passed the resolution to the elected officials. There was a typo. We redid the resolution. We got it re-signed, and there's a cover letter that you'll see that accompanied the resolution to all of those elected officials. We also CC'd the mayor, and someone suggested, which we'll take care of it tomorrow, we will be sending it to the City Council.
Well, actually, we had suggested to make a separate resolution to the City Council.
That's also coming. And I'll let the superintendent address that when she's ready for that part of it. So that's what we're gonna do with this resolution that's on your side. Next up is a package which President Brodrick called me a few times in the past week on this issue, and I thought maybe it was time to maybe spend a few minutes. It has to do with Oprah requests, and I gave you an example of the most recent submissions I've gotten on Oprah requests, and the majority of them have come from Mr. Lynn, from the Jersey Journal. And in Mr. Lynn's, just to explain how the process used to be, we used to have a standard form which someone needed to fill out. When they filled our form out, we would charge them a nickel, a page, whatever, you know. Those days are long gone. Now they're allowed to do it electronically. What Mr. Lynn does is usually what we'll see. He references two. One's a citizen guide, and one is a New Jersey appeals story. And I included that for you for basically everything you need to know about an Oprah request. Okay? But I do get these quite often. I will share them with the board if they want. What I do notice, besides the newspapers, the one we get a lot is from the American Civil Liberties Union. And what they'll do is they'll request, and this is an example of one that we received December 22nd. So every school district in the state of New Jersey got this. Four pages of things that they want. I'm sure every school district in every state of the union has gotten the same Oprah request. Mr. Smith's office usually helps me with Oprah requests. Someone like Lori Mariano has to spend days trying to put this Oprah request together, and this is only half of the American Civil Liberties Form. So obviously, the ones we get from the newspaper are usually pretty easy, and I do usually check with our legal if I don't know the answer. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. Sometimes it's just a repeat of something I've experienced over the last 14 years. I don't need to ask an attorney and waste everybody's time when I know the answer. But I just wanted to give you a copy of the Oprah background and the most recent request that we got. Now, the one I did want to talk to the board about is the most recent one that we received from Mr. Creche. And he asked for minutes of closed sessions for the month of August, September, October, November, December, January. Laura and I worked on that. I then made a copy and gave it to Mr. Piscual, who looked it over, and this is okay for us to send now, in his opinion, in my opinion. And that's just one that you might have heard of from Mr. Creche. I don't know if anybody, none of your correspondents, so I'll make sure...
There's one I want to talk about. There's one I want to talk about.
I will make sure that the board gets a copy of this one, so that you could see what this is. But we've been actually working on this one since he submitted it, and actually, we just sent him a message that we needed a two-day extension to be able to satisfy his requirement. So I just wanted to give you an overview on Oprah. Like I said, if you'd like, I'll have it, you know, I'll keep a running package of the ones I get each month, so that you're aware of it, if you'd like. But then, like I said, any individual questions, like I said, don't hesitate, pick up the phone, ask. And if I could help you with it, I will.
An Oprah request that requests a list of candidate names. I thought, I don't think that's fair to candidates who might be working somewhere and might be putting them in jeopardy where they're at before they even know if they're getting what they might get. So, I'm all for transparency, but people are entitled to their privacy until it's public. So, I mean, is it appropriate to...
Well, that was something we were talking about before that we...
That's an area we should discuss in close...
Yeah.
Okay.
What about the Oprah requests of the, that the administrators that just need a paper? Is that something for close...
We should discuss that in close.
Sure. But you have that one in your packet that he asked. Yeah, we'll talk about those inside. All right, so that is it for my housekeeping. I will ask you to turn over to our agendas for tonight's meeting. You'll see a list of communications. This first letter from Mr. Craig, obviously, from our reorg meeting to me getting the letter, we actually did address this at our last meeting, and I included in there Leo's response to his letter. But like I said, when I get it, I'm required to put it on, which is what I did. And then you'll see two retirement letters and a resignation letter. That is all I have for this evening on communications. Resolution two will be for Inside. I'll ask everybody to turn to Resolution three. So this one I did send home. So obviously, you know, based on the New Jersey School Funding Reform Act, this is talking once again about the subject of underfunding. Okay? And then we'll have this addressed tonight, and then this will go out to all the proper authorities that need to. So these are all non-consent, so who would like to move in second, number three? And I'll go over all the moves in seconds when we come inside. I also sent home with the backup material with Resolution four, which was the school book release that Mr. Smith spoke about. Same thing, I know Finance went over this again the other day. Would two members of Finance like to move in second? Mr. Garilic?
Sure, I'll second.
Next up is number five. This is amendment to reallocate the carryover funds to the IDA dash B 2007 grant, and you'll see the breakdown of those figures. Once again, a move in a second. Resolution six will be for Inside, and I have to give you a new copy. There was a typo in it. At this time, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Superintendent for some items that Central Office would like to do. And if I have any time remaining, I would like to start resolutions in the second packet, which is for next week's meeting. I'll give time if we do have time.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, and good evening to everyone. We've had some wonderful things happen in the school district that I would like to share with you. At the high school level, Laura Craig, supervisor of special programs, and Lori Alexander, who's a dance teacher, and also Jessica Minz, who's a honors United States history teacher. They got together and they applied for a grant that was sponsored by the Gilder Lerman Institute. You've heard that. That's a program that we use for social studies, for professional development, and other activities. Anyhow, they put out this grant, and it's all to do with the Hamilton Show, the play. So it was targeted for New York City schools, but these three people decided that they were gonna put it in anyhow. So they won, and as a result, I'm so happy to tell you what's gonna happen. 100 Bayonne High School students in grade 11 are going to a matinee performance for Hamilton, and it's only going to cost $10 a person. So the students have to pay $10 a person. Right? This is absolutely unbelievable. So they got to the point where they had to decide who was gonna be involved in, because so many kids were interested in going. So there is a group called the Founding Era, and they gave them inclusive classroom resources so that the students would have to create a unique piece of performance art. And so they had to compete for this. So students wrote poems and raps and monologues or songs, and they used primary historical documents from this founding era. So they were selected, the top. These teachers went through all of this. It was a long amount of time to select these kids, and one piece will be sent to the Hamilton cast prior to their showing, and they're also going to have a Q and A with the entire Broadway cast. So after the show. So this is just like, how does this ever happen in your life, right? So thanks to, you know, Laura and Lori and Jessica, they didn't believe that everything should go to New York City kids, and they decided, "Let's give it a shot," and the Bayonne's kids, you know, kids are going to have that opportunity. So that's really a wonderful, wonderful thing. And of course, there's bus transportation involved, so they have reached out to BEF, who is our wonderful funding agency, and we're going to see if they will take care of the transportation, but that's not decided yet. Also, we have the Bayonne Chamber of Commerce. You know that we do have a junior chamber of commerce. I started that last year. So Chamber of Commerce came here, and the Bayonne Community Bank, plus the Carepoint and a couple of other organizations came, and they gave tips to the kids about interviewing skills and, you know, going forward on their careers. So here's some pictures. They were here yesterday up in our library, and it was really, it really turned out quite great. We had our second academic event, which is called the Geography Bee, and this year, we had Midtown came out first, and second, we had Bailey, and third, the competition was a Resco school. So here's some more photos of those students that won. And I have to tell you, these kids are so smart. It's really very, very interesting, because, you know, geography is almost like the forgotten subject now. So we tried to keep it. Years ago, geography was taught as a separate subject. Now it's integrated into social studies. So to keep it, you know, on the forefront, you know, we have this event every year. In this room today, we had 11 teachers, plus Maria Loyah, who is our engineering teacher at Bayonne High School, and we had representatives from every school, and we had a gentleman from Legos. His name was Tim. And we had, through BEF, we received 5,000 grand from them, and they bought robotics for each school. So there will be 15 students participating in this event, Tuesday, I'm sorry, February, March, and April. They'll learn how to work with a robot, they'll learn how to put it together, because the teachers learned that today, and they will disassemble it and give it to these different groups of kids. Then they will have a face-off in each school, and then come probably May, there will be a big competition. And the competition will be school against school. And in order to fund it, I've gotten nine sponsors, along with Tara Craig giving me a hand, and Dr. Degman. And so we have nine sponsors who gave us $300 each, and they're going to have a shirt with their name on it, so it'll probably, thanks to Unico and President Chris Patella, it'll be Unico against Chandelier. Rocky Caviello, worth a $300 sponsorship. So we have this running, and so this should be really quite interesting as a prelude to STEM education. So it's very important to get our students to start thinking about that, to get them ready for our high school program. So we're very happy about this. Also, we had our annual Rotary Organization had their Christmas program, and they invite a pre-K program up there. So these are the Rotary members and all of our students. And this year, Santa Claus was our supervisor, Steve Lasco. And then you will see the standby there, Joe Doria, who said that he can't do it anymore because he doesn't think Santa Claus should have a cane. So you'll see that in the picture. So that was really, you know, well responded. Also, I have great news to tell you. You know, there was some concern, as you all know, about our graduation rate, and our graduation has improved, rate has improved 4.31%, which is wonderful. So now it's at 86. And this will show you the ranking here, and I'm very proud to let you know that we're tied with Hoboken. Trustee Munoz? Okay. So just, I know you had some concerns about that. So through our transitional counselor, one of her responsibilities was to follow on these students, plus our guidance department, plus our vice principals, plus Mr. Copaz, plus Dr. Degman, plus Mr. Bacarella. We put our heads together to see what we could do to help this rate, so we're very pleased about that. Also, moving forward, the BEF is doing another program called Harlem Wizards. This is their third fundraiser. If you know anybody that would like to go, here's a flyer. It's going to be February 12th on Sunday at 2 o'clock. The kids love it, the parents love it. It's $10 for adults, it's very economical, and $8 for children. So Mr. Rodriguez, who is the president, is fostering that program. Also, BEF is doing something really wonderful. They made a relationship with New Jersey Devils Learn to Play Hockey, and it's a new initiative coming to Bayonne, and they will give to our students, think about how young they are, from ages four to nine, the opportunity to get, I believe it's, six lessons with New Jersey Devils. They will be the people who will be instructing the kids. So you'll say to yourself, "Well, how are they gonna do it without equipment?" The New Jersey Devils will supply equipment for every child, from skates to pads to shirts to helmets. And so they'll take up to probably 100 kids that are interested in it, and the only thing that is involved here is $50 per child to be involved in this, and this is a real bargain. And they don't even want the money, the New Jersey Devils, but what they believe that they must charge something so people continue to be involved with the program and not give it one day's shot. And, but the BEF will keep that $50 because they're the ones that's, you know, sponsoring the program, and we're giving them the ice. That's our contribution. So we're trying to build our hockey program, and we've really done a great job. Our hockey team was very light in numbers, and this year, they have, and if you haven't watched in the newspaper, they're having a much better season than we've had in the past. We have more students that are interested in hockey, and I see kids in the morning carrying their skates because they have the opportunity to skate. And also, the entire complex, the Rich Corby complex, is really much more involved every day. So we're really pleased about that.
Do they have skate skates?
Yes. Skates and everything. $50. How about that?
I hate to, I skated a little while. I was with the slow-mo hockey group, and let me tell you what outfitting somebody would be, and I mean, unbelievable.
Yep.
The only good thing about my size is my foot didn't grow every year, so...
It's an expensive thing.
Yeah. You know, so it really is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our students to start to get, you know, involved in hockey. And, you know, we need to sustain the hockey program here at Bayonne High School. We have a large investment down there. It's also, besides being recreational for so many students and so many adults in our community, it is also a fundraiser for us. It's a revenue streaming program that constantly flows, so we're very happy about it. And, you know, you saw the clip on the dance program, Mr. Craig talked about it. Now here's our kids. This is such a professional picture, you'd say to yourself, "Wow, are these really the Bayonne High School girls?" Well... Well, they are. And here's this picture. And this is taken by Tom Hart, who was our photography teacher, and he does a great job with that. And we had a dance performance last Friday night here. It was wonderful. It was extremely well attended by audience, by family and friends. And I have to tell you, it was an hour, and it felt like it was five minutes, because the kids were really, really spectacular. And they really love what they do. So the dance program is growing. Every time we turn around, there are more needs for the program. I also would like to report to you that I participated. I did invite you to come, the Martin Luther King Remembrance. And also, at that event, they had the installation of NAACP members for the year. That's the first time that they have done that. But this was in the Friendship Baptist Church, and that was on Sunday. Also, we're having a fair. Remember how we did the trade fair for everyone? This is a special affair, which is called the Transition Resource Fair. And this is sponsored by the Hudson County Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Disability Services. So this is for our students that are leaving Bayonne High School and hopefully getting ready for the future. So this is for students only with IEPs and 504s. So we're having that on Thursday from four thirty to six thirty. And it's the same day as, back to school night, I think, right? Or parent conferences, yeah, parent conferences. So we hope that parents will take advantage of that also. And we have a special thing that happened. I don't know if it's too premature, I'm going to ask our counsel. The letter we got from the person about the money?
The lawsuit.
Yes, I'm a Willie.
Yeah, the, well, it may be a little premature. There's an application in front of the.
Chris, I think you might need a mic.
Yeah.
It may be very premature at this point. Well, it is. There's an application that's been filed in the Superior Court of New Jersey in Union County, to the Union County Surrogates Office, and James, the court's surrogate, to accept a will that was handwritten in nineteen ninety-three by a gentleman by the name of William G. A. W. O. R. He was ninety-seven years old, was born and raised in the city of Bayonne, subsequently moved to Broadway. When there's a handwritten will, there has to be certain provisions that are complied with in order for it to be acceptable by the court. My view of it is, from looking at the will, it appears to have satisfied all the criteria. But nonetheless, there were two executors named in that will that have renounced. They do not want to be executors. It probably had to do with their age, quite frankly, and the complexity of the estate. So there's an application by his first cousin, once removed, who was his closest living relative, to be appointed as the executor of the will. There were some initial distributions in the will through bequests of, like, seven bequests for like ten thousand dollars apiece. And then the balance would be divided equally between the Bayonne Board of Education, wherever he was born and raised, and the Broadway Board of Education, wherever he was born, where he spent his adult life, to share equally in the balance of his estate, and that those money would be set up in each school district for a fund to give scholarships to students who are involved in the engineering department. And it appears from the certifications that were attached to the moving papers that the estate has a minimal value of three million dollars.
Wow.
So we'll certainly not oppose the application by the plaintiffs to have the will accepted into probate, because if it's not accepted, it then just goes to any surviving heirs. But the biggest benefactors here would be the Bayonne Board of Education and the Broadway Board of Education. So we'll certainly join in with the plaintiffs and tell the judge that, you know, our view of the papers also indicate that will looks great to us, so we ask that it be submitted to probate, admitted into probate, and that the first cousin, once removed, be appointed as the executor. So keep everybody apprised of what's going on, but that could be a.
A win-win.
A win-win for the city of Bayonne.
You know, when you think about.
Ninety-seven-year-old, worked at Western Electric, and, you know, you asked why someone who worked at Western Electric would come up with a number of about three million dollars. And it was clear, because in the papers it indicated that he was never married and he had no children. So.
So now.
That's a secret.
So, I mean, think about it.
No children, what's the expense of that?
Sure. So, I mean, each school year, including engineering school, is at least sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars a year. So times four, I mean, think about that. So that would take care of quite a few students to have a free ride to go to an engineering school. So that's wonderful.
We have a senior right now who's just recently accepted into Stevens Institute.
Right.
My youngest son graduated there about five, six years ago, five years ago.
Right.
And I know that, of course, back then was close to sixty thousand dollars. It's got to be close to seventy-five now.
Oh, yeah.
So Mr. Wong's quest to the Bayonne Board of Education, certainly more than welcome. And we'll obviously support the application by the plaintiffs in that lawsuit.
All right, thanks very much, Chris. Also, on another good note, you know, the relationship that we developed with New Jersey City University, giving us the scholarships for the students of the business department? Well, they are very anxious now that we have an academy of health and medical sciences, that we're going to have a meeting with the proper officials, that they're going to be working with us, as the first school district, by the way, to give scholarships for students going forward in the medical sciences, nursing, and in those areas. So they like very much what has happened with our partnership with them. That was something I developed about two and a half years ago, and we're going to meet with them again, and we'll be working toward doing that with the Academy of Health and Medical Sciences, which I think is another great opportunity. And also, on that end, our students that are going into the EMT program will officially start on Tuesday. And we have eight students that we granted scholarships to. And we have the transportation all organized now, and those students will be starting their program. In fact, I'm going to meet with them all on Monday morning to discuss their responsibility and what it is that they have to do. Laura Craig has already identified those students with a committee from the teachers that are involved with the program. But I also want to talk to them and meet them and tell them how fortunate they are that we were able to get this money granted from local vendors and local partners in order to give them this opportunity by the end of June to have a career, a career of some sort. It can be a stepping stone to a further medical career. It could be just something to keep them going. They can work at night, they can go to school during the day, because we all know that EMTs work twenty-four, seven, Sundays, holidays, and everything that happens. You always need your EMT staff. So, you know, I'm going to make that, you know, be my first thing on Monday morning. So that's all I have right now. Sure.
Are they from all of the school area?
Yeah, yes.
So it's not just one house?
No, no, no. They applied for it. There were some students that were in the American, in the academy, the health academy. There were some kids that were in the academy, the other business academy, too. So they're all over.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Copaz?
We have a few other questions.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Degman?
A few highlights to follow up to Dr. McGinn. We continue to embody the dream of Dr. Martin Luther King this week with our activities throughout the district. If you like us on Facebook, you can see some of the activities that the students are doing. EK and Array. Our novels are Young Martin Luther King, Martin's Big Words, and Martin Luther King Jr. and the March on Washington. Officially, in our visual and performing arts, as Dr. McGinn says, we had it in tandem on Friday night. And as far as the science department, spring is the time for a science fair. They're preparing now aggressively for the St. Barnabas STEM Challenge. Also, we're looking forward to the North Jersey Science and Humanities Seminar at Rutgers University. And also, I had the opportunity to attend the robots today. It was wonderful watching the Legos in action and the coding and the STEM initiative, and that will be our feeder system for the high school. We're excited again about the opportunity with the field of learning to go see Hamilton, but also in social studies, some of our teachers will be going to, hopefully, Colonial Williamsburg over the summer. They're applying right now for a week seminar. And, you know, we know Mr. Woods. His students are having an art display at King University's Center for Human Rights as a celebration of diversity. So we're happy to see some of the work there. And the Bayonne School Board is a member of King University's Diversity Council. So we're happy that Gene has his work, and he continues to shine in that regard. With respect to testing right now, our students in grade three and seven completed the interview test last week. We fully get ready for part now, which will be coming up. And graduation appeals for those students that did not satisfy the Part B, CTE, SAT, or PSAT. We have to give them an opportunity to apply to an appeal. So that's part of what we'll be discussing going forward. And we're happy with our graduation rate, and Superintendent talked about that. With respect to Title I, we continue with our parent workshops. And what do we have in the Math Olympiad, three point one four? March fourteenth will be our Math Olympiad. We'd love to have you there. And finally, English Language Arts, we continue to work with our novels, focusing on the integration of Google Classroom across grade levels. And I had the opportunity to attend a two-day workshop in Newark, New Jersey, and collaborate with many superintendents, assistant superintendents, and tech teams. I went with our tech department. And we're looking to apply for a ribbon for future-ready schools. And you know all the work that we've been doing with our Google and our Chromebooks, and we were there. So in March, we will apply for a two-point-oh future-ready technology integration. So it's not about having the technology, it's how we're using it in the classroom. And we think we're moving in that model. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. D. And, you know, thinking about how we try to do things in this district and the problems that we have with funding, you know, we have our teachers that are advocating for us also. So I had one of the teachers come in and see me this morning. Her name is Mrs. Pike, and she teaches tourism, Irene Pike. And she told me that she was at an event on Monday, which was held in Jersey City, and it was a celebration of Martin Luther King. And Reverend Patterson, who was her pastor, was the speaker at the program. Well, along with Reverend Patterson was Senator Menendez. So she knew Senator Menendez because he was helpful when we were getting a grant for the ocean terminal, because we do go down there and we go on the cruise line, and we work very hard with them, and they work hard with us, and they allow our kids to participate when they're in port. So anyhow, she went up and spoke to him, and he remembered her. And she said, you know, Senator, can you do us a favor in Bayonne? And so he said, what, sure, what does Bayonne need? She said, we need money. She said, we are the most underfunded, second-underfunded district in the state. So he said, well, you know, I can't do anything about that because I'm federal, he said, but let me bring over this person. And he brought over a woman by the name of Missy Balmer. So, and he said that that's a state issue. And he introduced her to another gentleman who is Michael Federacchio. Michael Federacchio is a former Bayonne resident, but he happens to be on the staff of Senator Sweeney. So she explained the plight, and she asked me to call him up. And I said, well, I've already spoken to him, Irene. I said, I know Mr. Federacchio. I said, when we were involved with pre-K our way, remember when Senator Sweeney came here and also Senator Cunningham, they had the summit, and we housed that. So we talked about the needs of Bayonne and the involvement and all of that. So she said, well, I'm trying. I said, well, that's great. I'm glad that you are. So I said that I will continue to talk to them. But if you're listening on the radio, if you're listening in the newspaper, they're starting the funding discussion again. So there may be a situation where they bring something, you know, into this year's budget. So I hope so. If the governor gives anything, we'll still make out. If the state does what they should be doing and giving us all that money, we'll really make out. So whatever anybody gives us, we certainly will take. So I hope that they don't put the kibosh on it and that they start looking at the districts that, like us, that are in such great need and how we've been neglected for all these years. Nine years of legislators going to Trenton, and nobody has been able to give us the proper funding that we should have here in our district. So we can compete with the rest of the schools in Hudson County, our neighbor, right at City Line. They get a tremendous amount of money. I know that Mr. Trustee Garlick could give you the figures on what other school districts get and what Bayonne doesn't get. He's done all of that research. And I think it's, you know, time that we should, you know, become more involved. I know that we're sending home these letters, the resolutions, rather, to the people that are involved. I know you had some conversation. We had a conversation last Friday with our Assemblyman to reach out and help us to see what he can do. Of course, he's willing to do that. And so, you know, we're trying to work on every end to bring this back to the attention of the legislators, that they can't keep forgetting and neglecting our students. Our students count, too. And this is not new for us, because three, four years ago, we wrote letters, ten thousand letters, went down to Trenton from our children, and our campaign was, Bayonne School Kids Count. We had a large summit assembly in the auditorium, and we had people come from all over, and people said they were going to help us, they were going to help us. Well, you know where our plight is right now. Nobody has given the help that we need for the school district. That's right for our children. We're here for the children of Bayonne, and that's not always remembered by everyone. So I don't know if you want to add to that, Ted, for what we had mentioned with, you know.
No, just briefly, and again, I'll share some of the numbers with all of the trustees. But basically, if you look at the funding that comes from the state, and I've repeated this a number of times, that the city of Bayonne has roughly ten thousand students in our system. Jersey City has roughly thirty thousand students. So Jersey City has three times as many students as the city of Bayonne. However, according to the state funding, the money that comes into each district, while they have three times as many students, they get eight times as much money as the city of Bayonne. And the latest figures that I looked at, the city of Bayonne receives roughly fifty-four million dollars from the state of New Jersey. Jersey City gets four hundred and nineteen million dollars. And if you look at what one thousand dollars per student would represent, in other words, Bayonne gets roughly sixty-two hundred dollars per student, and Jersey City gets roughly sixteen thousand. If the city of Bayonne got a thousand dollars more, which would put us roughly seventy-two hundred dollars per student, that would mean an additional ten million dollars to this district. That solves a lot of financial issues that come up in this district. Many of the people say, well, some of the districts in Hudson County were the old Abbott districts. And that's true, Jersey City and West New York and Union City, et cetera. However, forget about all of that. When they passed the School Funding Reform Act in two thousand and eight, there was a funding formula. And since two thousand and eight, the state hasn't made what they said they would do for the funding. We've been short-changed. And I think the citizens of Bayonne ought to understand that, because when you're short-changed, then the only way to make up the deficit is through taxes that are local taxes. Jersey City has roughly seventy-seven percent of their school budget paid by the state. Union City and West New York are probably under ten percent of their local taxes paid for it. Almost eighty-five percent comes from the state. Bayonne is almost forty-seven percent from the state, forty-eight percent roughly from the city. A tremendous inequity. And finally, I'd just like to say, don't Bayonne students and Bayonne teachers count as far as the state goes? That's all I'd like to add. Thank you, Dr. McGinn.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, what do you have to add tonight?
We had a very productive dialogue on Friday over with some of the civic leaders in town. And hopefully, as Ted said, the funding formula, even if it's followed, it would mean volumes to the city of Bayonne. What I have to offer tonight, Superintendent. What I have to offer tonight, Superintendent, if the trustees agree to Agenda Item Number Two tonight, my office will start immediately and optimistically to get the movement on the Teachers Guide by February 15th. Realistically, probably March 1st would be more realistic. But if you do approve that Agenda Item tonight, we will start on that immediately. So, the teachers can move on Guide as quickly as we can get it done in the office. Also, on Monday, the city had asked us, and the central office got together with Dr. McGee, if they could move their zoning board meeting to Nicholas Oresko School. They are expecting an overflow crowd on Monday evening. So, tomorrow, I'll do a walkthrough and see how we're going to set up the auditorium in Oresko School for that civic meeting on Monday. It starts about 6:00 PM. And lastly, tomorrow in your package, you'll get an updated version of the Board Secretary's report with the spreadsheet that will include all appropriations, expenditures, encumbrances, and available balances as of December 31st. That will be in your package, all of your packets tomorrow. So, that's all I have to add, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And also, those reports will be discussed at the next meeting. So, you'll have time to review them, as well as the reports that I give you monthly. So, this is in this book. You all know what this is from the superintendent's office. And please review them. And if you have any questions, we'll address them next week. And also, with the Board Secretary's report, which is the, as you all know, is the financial report. Okay. And that's all I have.
Is the maid have run away from us? I can always tell you jokes if you have to.
I'm curious. Okay. We're ready.
Looking at the clock on the wall, I don't think we have enough time to do any workshop items. So, at this time, we'll adjourn to a closed session for legal personnel and negotiation items until 7:24. There's a meeting being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10, colon, 4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in local papers on January 11th, 2017. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education requests they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video, will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on BEN TV, on Cablevision Channel 77. The Bayonne Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting. If the use of this device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct your personal business. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we stand for a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:03 PM, the 19th day of January. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Patricia L. McGee, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Copas, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretaries, Mr. Leo J. Smith, Jr., Assistant Superintendent for Business, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Mitchell Piscual, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Finnerty.
Here.
Trustee Gerhle.
Present.
Trustee Lawande.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
Here.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda, was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
We'll start with our agenda tonight. We have six items. I'll start with Resolution Number One. We have four pieces of communication. Is there a motion to accept the communication?
I move.
And a second?
I'll make the second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Gerhle.
Aye.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Resolution Number Two. Mr. Clark, did we clear that up with you and Mr. Sosh? Okay. Number Two, and all these resolutions are on our bulletin board. Be it hereby resolved that the attached memorandum of agreement, which was on our bulletin board, and I will replace the copy that was taken down, be it hereby resolved that the attached memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education of the city of Bayonne and the Bayonne Teachers Association, covering the period retroactive to September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2017, be in the same or hereby approved, be it further resolved that the Board President and Secretary are hereby authorized to execute said agreement in name and on behalf of this Board, be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business, School Business Administrator of this Board of Education is hereby authorized to take the necessary action to implement the terms of this agreement. The foregoing resolution is effective immediately. And then it is listed with also a memorandum of agreement, a BTA sheet for teachers, a BTA sheet for psychologists, and a BTA sheet for secretaries. And I'll make sure I get another copy up on the bulletin board. So, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Trustee Lawande. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Cruden. So, on that motion and second, Resolution Two. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Gerhle.
Aye.
Trustee Lawande.
Before, I just want to say, it really was hard putting this together. But I wish the best for the teachers and hopefully, when we move on, it'll be a lot easier to get contracts settled. And of course, yes.
Okay. That's a yes from Trustee Lawande. Trustee Munoz.
I'd also like to add to Trustee Lawande that it's, you know, settling contracts in Bayonne has been a problem for many years. And hopefully, this will be the last time that a contract goes this long or teachers go this long without a contract. I think both sides have to get better in working together more, you know, to prevent these types of things from happening. So, yes, happily, I vote yes.
I believe, Mr. Dantrell, you had your hand up.
I hadn't planned to speak, but since the board members spoke, I can't let that go by. Being glad that this is over is ridiculous. So, if, I don't even think any of you even read this contract. You're giving the majority of the teachers in this district $350 raise for last year and a $440 raise for next year. That's not a raise. That's an insult. Their medical went up more than that for many of them. And anybody up here that knows anything about education, that's not the way to treat your staff, by giving them something that is no raise for two years. It's no raise. So, the fact that we settle is because you lost $2.9 million. And when I sat in negotiations for the year and a half, I heard, and I also heard at these meetings, that we have to worry about the taxpayer. Well, you would have had to spend maybe another half a percent each of the two years to give a reasonable raise, a low raise, but reasonable, to settle it where we could go back to the teachers and say, "In bad times, here's what you got, $1,000 at top, $1,000 at the bottom." But it was too much to burden the taxpayers with. But you don't seem to have a problem and nobody in this town, I'm glad it's being taped because nobody was at the board meeting when the $2.9 million was announced, that you can't find it or you don't know where it went or you can't account for it and it's a deficit. That's on you nine and the rest of the people that run this system. You're going to raise the taxes to get that money, though, and that's going to be 6% as opposed to half of 1%. So, this is a terrible contract. All you've done is set up this town to be, have a broken school system. The good teachers will leave. The new ones that come won't stay long. Nobody can live with no raise for two years. That's no raise. Because even if you count the 354, you cleared 200 and their medical went up beyond that. So, that's a ridiculous contract. If I wasn't afraid that you'd lose another $5 million, I wouldn't have signed this one. And that's not spoken about. You filled the gap for this year by taking money out of the capital improvements and you'll lose $5 million from the state. Mr. Gerhle said last time, along with Mr. Broderick, "I want to remind you that this district is the second most underfunded district in the state." That's irrelevant to what's going on. You have a budget. You work within the budget. You can't keep crying because they didn't fully, they didn't fully fund anybody. You, whatever money you have in April, when you set it up, when you strike the budget, I don't care what you're striking at, 60 million, whatever it is, you have to live within the budget. You don't spend beyond that. And I showed you all the areas that you did overspend by making all those vice principals, by suddenly giving ridiculous raises to secretaries off their guide. There's a million areas that you spent too much on. You spent too much on developing the academy, even though it's a credit to the district. But if you don't have any money and you're the most underfunded district in the state, why would you do that? You're the people that's supposed to stop this. The only thing you didn't stop was a bad contract going through. And you're going to live and the people in this community are going to live with the school system that will react to that.
Trustee Munoz, your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes. And I'd like to say, I hope this is the beginning of some good fortune for all the members of our community, the children, the teachers, the families, the parents, and the board members as well. Thank you.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next, Resolution Number Three. Whereas the New Jersey School Funding Reform Act of 2008, the state's school aid formula ensures adequate and equitable school funding for each child on the basis of individual need, regardless of where the child lives. Whereas the 2016-17 school year marks the seventh year of underfunding the SFRA. Whereas the Bayonne School District has been underfunded under the SFRA by a total of $117 million since 2010 and is underfunded in its current school year by $10.2 million. Whereas the Bayonne School District is among the 20 most underfunded districts in the state of New Jersey. Whereas the Bayonne School District has always been below adequacy under the SFRA and in the current school year is $10 million or $1,000 per pupil below adequacy. Whereas continued underfunding of the SFRA has resulted in cuts to vital educational programs and services in the school throughout, schools throughout the state. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education supports the SFRA and is clearly designated pathway to full funding of the law in order to provide New Jersey schoolchildren with the resources they need to ensure a successful future and to which they are entitled by law. Resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education urges the New Jersey State Legislature to increase state aid to school districts in the FY 2018 state budget in order to lessen the impact of the SFRA underfunding, resulting in harmful cuts to programs, staff, and services. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education urges the New Jersey State Legislature to begin the process of returning all school districts to full SFRA funding so that the Bayonne School District and all the other school districts can provide their students with the opportunities they need to be successful in school. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion and second on Resolution Number Three. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Gerhle.
Aye.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Whereas the state, New Jersey Senate and Assembly both passed the unanimous vote, a bill relative to the sale and lease backs of textbooks. And whereas the governor signed said bill into law as Chapter 55, Public Laws of 1998 on July 10th, a little typo there, 1998, said law amending NJS 18A 20-4.1 and NJS, NJS 18A, colon, 18A-42, and amending and supplementing PL 1996 C 138. And whereas the concept was evaluated and supported by the Commission of Education, the New Jersey School Boards Association, the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials, and the New Jersey Principal and Supervisors Association. Whereas the Superintendent of Schools, the Assistant Superintendent for Business, School Business Administrator, and the General Counsel of the Bayonne Public School District have reviewed said statute. And whereas the lease of new textbooks, adoptions, and the sale and lease back of existing textbook inventories will afford the school district a financial alternative for the acquisition of a non-consumable capital asset with the cost of said asset distributed over the useful life. And whereas such process necessitates the preparation of a complete and detailed inventory of all existing textbooks to include titles, publishers, ISBN numbers, copyright dates, and the number of textbooks on hand for both student editions as well as teacher editions. Whereas after a preparation of said inventory, a certified estimate of total valuation of said inventory must be prepared for approval by the collateral officials of financial institutions offering to fund said lease. Whereas the administration has reviewed information provided by EEF Incorporated, a consulting firm whose principal officer has prepared most of the textbook inventories and valuations executed in the state of New Jersey since the implementation of the said statute. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bayonne Public School District Board of Education does hereby approve the participation in a sale and lease back program for both existing textbook inventories and new textbook acquisitions pursuant to Chapter 55, PL 1998. Be it further resolved that the Bayonne Public School District Board of Education does hereby award a contract to the firm of EEF Incorporated as program manager for the preparation and valuation of the district textbook inventories based upon their extensive experience in this type of program. Be it further resolved that the fees shall be fixed at 1% of the inventory evaluation. Be it further resolved that the financing of said lease shall be administered by the district administration in a manner to be determined after consultation with the district council and at a time to be approved by the Bayonne Public School District so as to make available for the aforementioned acquisition of a non-consumable capital asset. Be it finally resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
There's a question. Dr. Resatar.
Dr. Andrea Resatar, 22 West 41st Street. How is this going to impact our selection of textbooks going forward? So, are we, we're buying textbooks from this, like new textbooks in the future are going to be dictated by this group of what selection we have? Or we're open to any textbooks and they're actually buying them and then you're leasing them back from them? I don't understand quite how this works.
You just have to get on my page.
I understand with the old textbooks, what they're doing, but how does this affect buying textbooks in the future?
It will not affect the
It will not affect the purchase in the future of any approved texts that you may need, okay? They will just become part of our inventory. And if we needed to sell them and then lease them back, we could do that also. But it does not put a damper on anything that you might need to run in particular area.
And is this being done to help it work?
This is being done, it's almost like a home improvement law. You take an asset that you add over time.
Okay, I'm just getting clarification, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on Resolution Number Four. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
No.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawande.
No.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
No.
Vice President Wilbeck.
No.
President Broderick.
Not at this time, no.
Okay, the resolution does not pass. Not at this time, does not pass. Resolution Five. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is required to create an amendment in the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, IDEA-B 2016 Grant, to reallocate carryover funds into the IDEA-B 2017 Grant to designate line items under the CEIS and basic spending. Therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education hereby approves the amendment for reallocation of carryover funds into the IDEA-B 2017 Grant as follows. CEIS, $89,325. Basic, $16,002. Non-public, $10,566. And preschool, $453. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second.
I'll second.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Resolution Number Six. Whereas there is a need for accountant purchasing agent, now therefore be it resolved that Matthew Bolden be and is hereby appointed to the position of accountant purchasing agent on a 12-month basis effective January 30th, 2017, at an annual salary of $129,509, and with full family medical coverage as well as prescription. Now therefore be it resolved that Matthew Bolden is to report to Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, Superintendent of Schools, for assignment. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second.
I second.
So I have a motion and second on Resolution Six. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Just to let everyone know, this is a replacement, it's not an addition, so yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we do have a few cards that were filled out. Let's start with Mr. William Blanchard, 706 Avenue E.
William Blanchard, 706 Avenue E. I have to agree with one thing that Mr. D'Angelo said today, which doesn't happen very often. It is irrelevant, your state underfunding when it comes to do with our negotiating for a contract. It is irrelevant. But it's also irrelevant, your $2.9 million deficit that he keeps wanting to talk about. That's between you and your overspending and whatever you did to enhance the students' educations. You overspent. That has nothing to do with me when I sit in a room and negotiate with you. He wants to talk out of both sides of his mouth and say, oh, the state funding, underfunding is irrelevant, but yet the $2.9 million deficit is relevant. No, you can't have that both ways. They're both irrelevant when I'm sitting there negotiating, okay? That's number one. The second point I want to make is, I'm imploring you guys to please, please, do not begin negotiating with this man. Please. You've hamstrung us for 20 years. Please do not begin negotiations again. Let us have our time to have a fair election, which we have not had in 20 years. I'm imploring this Board to please do not begin negotiations again with this guy, because then we're stuck by some bylaw, some, I don't know what it is, we're stuck that we can't have a fair election for a president. And that's ridiculous. 20 years, we haven't elected him? Please, do not start negotiations with him, because for some reason, it stops us from having an election for our president of our union. That's all I have to say.
Next up, Mr. Gene Woods, 18 Zabriskie Avenue.
I was going to say thank you about the contract, but first I have a question about the person who's just been hired at $129,000. You said that's obviously a replacement, but was that person who was before Mr. Buckley, was he receiving the same salary, $129,000?
Yeah.
All right, just, that's just a question. I was just getting up to say, obviously, you know, Mr. D'Angelo did say that the contract is not exactly fair, especially when you think about $300 coming down to people who are below the steps. But I thank our staff for doing this, Mr. D'Angelo and Ms. Hennessy, for at least getting it done, and on your part, getting it done. Hopefully, moving forward, in the future, we won't drag this out, you know, moving forward with elections and everything that's going to happen, or what will happen, hopefully that we won't continue the process of just dragging it out. Like I said when I spoke a couple of weeks ago, 10 years I'm here and eight years I worked out of contracts. I'm really hoping that moving forward, whatever has transpired, that we can kind of get past this and start really paying the people what they deserve and actually getting it done when it's supposed to. So, thank you.
Next up is Kristy Grisimo, 112 Broadway. I'm sorry if I butchered that name, please.
Good evening, I'm Kristy Grimko, 112 Broadway. I've never spoken at a meeting, so first, like Billy kind of, excuse me, Gene reiterated, thank you for the contract, yes, it's not great. I just wanted to say, I agree with Billy, that if we had open communication between the Board and Allen, I feel that all of the talking points, yes, we don't know every single pinpoint, but it would be nice to know every single piece that came into play. I know there was possibly at least two other offers that did get on the table, and then they were refused, okay? So I wanted to make sure we have open communication between the Board and the Union, and then, as well as elections. I don't know you personally, but because of the open communication, I felt that wasn't given. I would like to also put forward that we could possibly hold off negotiations so that we can possibly talk about another rep. And then my second question was about scheduling. I heard from my director that we are taking away quite a few electives and double-period math. I teach double-period, and my students are very much in need of that double-period. They don't grasp what they need to grasp in 40 minutes, and if I have that same Level B for 40 minutes next year, it's not going to happen. So I'm just imploring, asking for your input to the rest of Central Office and the Director of Guidance, that we look at scheduling again and possibly not take away double periods. I know math is not the only one that is losing it. I think English and history, possibly in the academy, is also losing the back, block scheduling. So I don't know if that has to do with money or something else, but scheduling is a huge deal for the students, and if we lose certain classes, it's not going to be to the benefit of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have no other cards.
No. Okay. There are motion to adjourn?
I'll motion, second.
Motion by trustee Cruden, second by trustee Desmond. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
It is 8:31, the Board will not return.